So that would be the ultimate.
So move to appoint Kathy Waldeck as acting mayor.
Second.
Oh, David.
That would be a voice vote.
Aye.
Voice, a voice vote would be appropriate.
Aye.
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 Good evening and welcome to the May sixth, twenty thirteen, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Biddy, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Acting Chair Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Morris absent. Alderman Pannalion.
Here.
Alderman Tac. Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Can we now all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is comments by acting chair. I have one comment tonight, and it's to introduce Rudy DeRam, who is the director of the Deerpath Art League and is here to make a presentation tonight. Rudy's gonna tell us a little bit about the league and specifically about the Young Artists Enrichment Program. And we also have some very talented young artists who are here with us this evening and who are going to receive the Mayor's Art Achievement Award. Rudy?
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Rudy DeRam. I am the gallery director for the Deerpath Art League. First off, I want to thank the mayor and staff for taking the time to recognize the creative talents of all of the fine young artists that participated in the program. Thanks also to all of the teachers for their efforts in helping to make the student show a success uh, through their various programs from kindergarten through high school. Uh, and most importantly, thank you to all of the wonderful, talented, emerging artists that had their work on display in the gallery for the past few weeks. So, to you guys, keep up the good work. Uh, it's encouraging to see so many, uh, creative young people. Uh, and I think our future for, uh, the creative field looks, uh, looks pretty good from where I was sitting every day. So, um, the, uh, the gallery, the art league, um, we're on our fifty-ninth year, uh, at the art league in Lake Forest. Next year, we'll be celebrating our sixtieth year. Uh, I believe they have been doing the emerging artist program for about the last eight years. And it's been a very successful program, uh, and very exciting for the teachers and the students, uh, when it rolls around every year. This is my first time doing it, so it was a learning experience for me. And it was quite enjoyable as the work came in and I had a chance to, to put everything up on the walls and just to see the projects and the level of creativity that the students were, were involved in. I know when I was in school, um, and I thought I was pretty good, my work was nothing like what I was seeing when, when the work came in. Uh, so it was, it was very, uh, encouraging and fun to see all that work. So, uh, we're gonna continue with the program. Uh, I hope that, uh, I can be involved with it to expand it, uh, to include more, uh, of the local area schools. And, um, we'll see where it goes from here. It's a, it's a great program and I think the kids have fun seeing their work in a professional environment up on the wall of, of a real gallery, uh, and the excitement of an opening night. Uh, and it's kind of a, it's a thrill for us. Uh, I had the, uh, pleasure of doing it once when I was a kid and I, I still remember it. It was a very memorable, uh, experience for me and, uh, uh, I hope so for, for all the kids here tonight as well. So, um, that being said, um, let's present the awards. Thank you. Thank you.
We're gonna ask the young people, when they get their work, please stand in front of the city councils. I think there could be probably one or two pictures.
I do have the list. Uh, first off, from the Deerpath Middle School, APT, Anna Aquino, sixth grade. Uh, Deerpath Middle School, five, six. Uh, this was a team effort. Uh, Hope Alex, Anna Aquino, Annie Birdiac, Maggie Mick, and Lucy Rubenstein. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing the names. I don't know, okay, alright, alright, so it was part of, I see, okay. Deerpath Middle School, seven and eight, Evan Brown, seventh grade. From the Lake Forest Country Day School, Annabelle Krieger, second grade. Also from Lake Forest Country Day, Emily Cullaton, eighth grade. Lake Forest High School, Jenna Crofts, junior. Also from Lake Forest High School, Heather Stark, senior. Sheridan Elementary, TJ Marks, kindergarten. Lake Bluff Middle School, Stephanie Reed. And from Everett Elementary, Alexander Wan, first grade. Cherokee Elementary, James Pruitt, first grade. And that's it for our presentation. Thank you, do we have, is there an extra? Okay, uh, right. Thank you again, teachers, parents, and, and the young emerging artists.
We stage everybody, okay? Let the little ones come forward one second, okay? Forward here. Okay, I'll tell you what, okay? So, we make sure everybody gets in the picture. Come on over here and then fill in right next to you. Here, okay? How's that? Alright, can you get them all in?
Can we all stand? You stand. I know. Stand for the city council.
Anthony, you should move in there too.
I see. Someone's got to do it.
Don't worry, we're gonna be here all night.
I can hang on to it and give it to the teacher? Probably, and they can, they can.
That was probably the most important thing, we'll do it in there.
Thank you very much for the support.
Everyone can see it's the city council. It's a big deal.
Oh, I scored, could say.
They really wanted it. Yeah. They got other things to do.
Yeah, well.
Jaded at age seventeen.
Yeah, actually, the pretty wild sounds are commitments.
Yeah, I felt like I was some sort of, uh, whatever, the target of the paparazzi or something.
There goes our audience, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, now the place is gonna empty.
I know, someone's gotta get order in here. I'd, I'd be hitting that table, yeah.
Well, we're very proud of the creativity of all our young people and we encourage them to continue in their talents. And now, that concludes my comments and we will now, uh, move to comments of the city manager. As the room quiets down.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair, I'm a city council. As a tough act, I'm a problem here. Uh, I have just one item that I wanna, uh, bring to the council's attention this evening and it came up very recently. We were approached by our county board representative, Mike Rummel, who has been working on a project to get a pedestrian bicycle bridge installed on the old armor abutments that are located immediately east of the Academy Woods subdivision. Uh, the map that's, uh, up on the screen, and I believe all of you have a copy in front of you, basically is a map of the Middleport Freeway Trail. And right now, if you go through Middleport Savannah, the trail dead ends at the southern, uh, basically with that yellow dot is the red dot that, uh, Karina's showing you. And the concept would be to connect the trail.
Sorry. The, would be to connect the trail, um, to, across the railroad tracks, down to Route sixty. It would proceed west over the tollway and there is a pedestrian, uh, walkway on the north side of the bridge right now. Would connect up with, uh, some existing trails that the forest preserve has, goes up Saint Mary's Road up to one seventy-six and circles back around. Um, as I mentioned, Ald- um, Alderman, uh, he was an Alderman at one time, and a mayor at one time, but now county board rep, Mike Rummel, is, uh, been reaching out to a number of local businesses, the city, Lake Forest Open Lands and other groups to see if he can get some matching funds to help install this. The total project cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood of around eight hundred thousand dollars. And, um, Mike is looking for a commitment from the city of approximately fifty thousand dollars of either cash or in-kind services that would go towards the installation of, uh, of this, uh, bridge. Uh, I mentioned that I would bring it forward to the council here this evening to get an indication as to whether or not the council would be interested, uh, in participating in this project. Um, I will add that this bridge is included in the city's new master bike plan that will be coming forward to you within the next thirty to sixty days for adoption into our comprehensive plan. So it is consistent with some of our long-range visions for interconnections of bike and pedestrian ways. So, really, it's here before you this evening. There's nothing that would be binding this evening, but just an indication from the city council as to whether or not this would be a project that we would participate in with the forest preserve, Lake Forest Open Lands and other local groups.
I, I think it's a great idea. What did they mean, though, by in-kind services?
Well, uh, the area, uh, and I don't know, Kathy, if you've got pictures of the existing conditions or not. The, um, as I mentioned, this is actually part of the old, uh, armor bridge that was the entrance into the, the armor estate. And so the abutments exist there right now, although they are overgrown. And so some of the in-kind services might be with our forestry crews or staff to do some clearing of land, some of those kinds of things to try and bring the cost down. Um, I don't think, well, the, the property would also have to be prepared because we've put some of these bridges in, um, like down at, um, Bluff Edge Bridge, uh, and, uh, also out recently at Middle Fo- uh, out at the MS site. And so they'll have to bring cranes in to, uh, to lower the, uh, superstructure in place, um, at that point in time. But that would be the kinds of services that either public works engineering or Parks and Forestry crews might be able to participate in to bring the overall cost down.
How do we value those services if we sign on for a fifty thousand dollar contribution? How do we value those things?
We do have hourly rates that we charge other people for when we participate in projects. We've done that with some other grants, both at the state and federal level, where we can assign a value to the time that they spend on a project. So, but this is an example, maybe Kathy, I'd ask you, was this the original armor bridge that was in place there? Um, so we're not talking about something quite as elaborate, uh, as this. It would be more of, uh, one of those, uh, metal prefab bridges that would go into place. But, uh, it has been reviewed by Metra, who owns the rail line in this area. They've conceptually approved it as well. And, uh, we're now just waiting to see if, uh, ultimately the forest preserve would be the ones, or I should say the county board would be the ones that would ultimately provide the bulk of the funding for the project.
So the land on both sides is higher than the tracks? And this is a, a level bridge, not a bridge that you need people to get your ride up to?
Correct. The abutments and the, the trails going in, if you were to come, uh, into the Academy Woods, uh, academy development and you're driving north on Academy Drive, you would actually see, uh, the, um, drive and abutments there on your right-hand side as you're going north.
And the area west of the railroad tracks, at least for kids and, uh, bicycle users, is almost in, it's an island into itself that really you can't come into the rest of Lake Forest 'cause Route sixty right now is unusable for bicycles or pedestrian traffic. And just, uh, A, to encourage bike traffic and B, to have a route to cross the tracks safely and come into the East Lake Forest area, I think it's just a win-win. For safety, uh, our kids, for adults who like riding bicycles, I, I think it's a great project to support and I truly wish them success. I think we should do everything we can to see if he can be successful.
I'm certainly for it.
I, I agree, I don't know if fifty thousand's the right number, we can kick that around. Uh, also, people in the Conway Development and the Fourth Ward can ride their bikes safely up through Conway and cross by the town line athletic fields, there's a traffic signal. And you can get in that way and then head over to, um, uh, cross the railroad tracks. So, uh, it, it certainly is compatible with our comprehensive bike plan.
Okay.
I'd be in favor.
Alright, I will let Mike know and, uh, again, it will have to come back to the city council once we have more details, we know exactly what the plan is, but I'll indicate our willingness to participate. Thank you, and that completes my report for this evening.
Okay. Now we'll move on to, uh, comments by council members. Uh, first is the finance committee report, which will be presented by our finance committee chairperson, George Pannalon.
Thank you. In, uh, a couple of minutes, we will be voting to, uh, finally approve the budget for fiscal year twenty fourteen. And, uh, so, I, I asked Elizabeth Hollab, the finance director, to give a, now we've, as you all remember, we've, we've visited many parts of this subject over many months and it's all now together. Uh, but before we do the final official act, uh, it seemed appropriate to provide a high-level overview just to, just to orient everybody. And, uh, so I've asked Elizabeth to provide maybe a five-minute quick overview of the big picture and then we should be in a position to move forward, um, later this evening. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sure. I'm not sure. Am I doing the right, Karina? Still getting used to the new AV. So how do I advance? Yeah, I was trying. Just use that one, not just use that. Okay. Alright. Okay, the first slide just provides an overview of our timeline. Um, this is obviously, um, a project that we've been working on for a number of months. We actually initiated the FY fourteen budget process in September, um, with development and refinement of the city's fiscal policies, which kind of set the framework, uh, for the development of the annual budget. Uh, and this timeline just shows the, the key, um, uh, progress, uh, items that, uh, that we take through the, the budget development process, uh, which culminated with a final discussion at the finance committee meeting on April fifteenth to discuss any final changes, uh, and then bringing the budget to the city council this evening for consideration. Um, just some broad highlights of the FY fourteen budget. The total fiscal year fourteen budget citywide proposed is eighty-two, just under eighty-two point seven million dollars. Um, we have a significant inflow projected of FY, in FY fourteen of grant revenue, six point six million dollars in projected grant funding, uh, to fund three projects as listed there. Uh, train station improvements in the central business district, Telegraph Road, Train Station Underpass and Wesley-Walkegan Road intersection improvements. With that six point six million dollars excluded from the total, the increase in the fiscal year fourteen budget over FY thirteen is only point two-two percent, so, uh, one-fifth of a percentage, um, point with those grant-funded expenditures removed. In addition to the grant funding pro- grant-funded projects, we have an additional five point eight million dollars in additional capital improvements. Uh, some of the highlights of that is eight hundred thousand dollars for the forest park improvements. Uh, Emerald Ash Borer Program, four hundred thousand dollars, obviously that's a multi-year program, um, but we've, uh, allocated four hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year fourteen towards those efforts. Uh, one point seven five million dollars in street improvements and just over one point eight million dollars in water and sewer system improvement. So, a significant, um, um, capital budget included in that eighty-two point seven million dollars. Um, looking at the eighty-two point seven million dollars in a little bit more detail, this summarizes major funds or fund types. Um, as you know, we have a very rigorous fund accounting, um, process. Uh, the standards are set out, um, by the governmental accounting standards boards and requires us to, uh, separate our funds in, uh, numerous, we have thirty-four funds budgeted for fiscal year fourteen. Uh, so just in grouping those in categories here, you can see, uh, the fiscal year thirteen estimated expenditures, the budget for fiscal year fourteen, the dollar change and the percentage change. Um, both the general fund and Parks and Recreation, which are the two, uh, primary operating funds of the city, show decreases in expenditures, uh, between fiscal year thirteen and fiscal year fourteen. Um, and then you can see that there are some significant increases year to year, which are highlighted at the bottom of the slide. So, uh, the two hundred and forty-one thousand dollar increase in miscellaneous operating is driven primarily due to a two hundred thousand dollar grant mu- grant match in the cemetery fund. Uh, so without that increase in grant match budgeted, the increase is only one point nine-five percent. In the capital project funds combined, we show a five point two million dollar increase. Uh, that is driven by the six point six million dollars projected in grant funding to offset ca- the cost of capital initiatives. In the debt service funds, uh, we have a significant increase, but that is due to a one point three million dollar transfer to the capital fund, that's the point half percent sales tax transfer, uh, to capital improvements. That's excess fund balance of all of the city's reserve policies. Uh, with that excluded, it is actually a decrease of two point eight percent in the debt service funds category. And finally, in the water and sewer fund, there's a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase. But the capital component of that utility fund budget increases by six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the operating, uh, expenditures actually decrease year to year.
Elizabeth, just to clarify.
The percentage, yeah, the decimal points are off by one place on that percentage.
Yeah, water and sewer, I think it's off.
Should be six point one nine seven, not sixty-one point ninety-seven.
Okay. My apologies. Yep. Um, looking at the general fund, the general fund is the most significant operating budget of the city. It accounts for the primary operations, uh, and the majority of city personnel. Uh, this is the fund, uh, in which public safety is budgeted, for example, and many of the administrative functions of the city. Um, the pie charts here just show, uh, the components of both the general fund revenue and general fund expenses. You can see that on the revenue side, the predominant revenue source in the general fund at fifty-two percent is property tax revenue. And then you can see the other major categories of revenues and the percentage of the total budget to which that revenue source contributes. And on the expense side, uh, you can see that the predominant category of expenditures in the general fund is personnel at sixty-eight point four percent, um, followed by other operating costs and a small percentage of capital. And transfers are actually transfers between funds, so it's not an outflow of resources. It's just based on the fund accounting principles with which we have to comply. Uh, there are certain transfers between funds and so three point eight percent of the expenses actually just move to other operating funds of the city. And the last slide, uh, which is a bit difficult to read because of the detail, but I think it's important to note that as part of the annual budget process, the city council also looks, uh, forward, five years, for the major operating funds of the city. Uh, this is to ensure that decisions made this year as part of the annual budget process um, are considered in light of what that impact is going to be going forward. So this is the five-year fund balance forecast of the general fund, because it's the primary operating of, fund of the city. But we do look at five-year fund balance forecasts for a number of the city's funds during the budget development. And you can see, um, that one of the significant issues, um, that the city will grapple with going forward, as does all municipal governments throughout the country, is that expenses continue to outpace revenues because the modest increases in revenues compared to the personnel costs that are driving, uh, higher increases in expenditures than revenues. And so you can see that, uh, the net before CIP, which is basically the results of operations in the general fund, remain positive through fiscal year sixteen. But in fiscal year seventeen and fiscal year eighteen, that out of balance between ex- operating expenditures and operating revenues will result in a, a negative, um, that of course will be addressed as we do future budget developments. But, um, this is the reason why you do five-year fund balance forecasting and you can kind of anticipate those issues. It led the city a few years ago to look at the early retirement incentive program to bring those costs down, reduce personnel costs, and address that on a proactive basis. So that concludes the presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I know we've discussed the budget on numerous occasions and, um, so.
Any questions that, uh, Elizabeth can help with or?
Alright, hearing none. Uh, is there a motion to approve the comprehensive fiscal plan for FY twenty fourteen?
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Acting Chair Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pannalion.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Are there any other comments by council members tonight?
I'd like to plug the Community Engagement Forum coming up a week from this Thursday evening for everybody here in City Hall and chambers. You're all invited to on council. It'll be May sixteenth at Gordon from seven to eight-thirty. The topic is native plantings as opposed to ornamental plantings, ornamental landscaping. I've got John Mariani giving us a, a presentation. Nathan Aberg from Conserv Lake County, Tricia Beck, Beckjord from Midwest Ground Plantings. John Centel will be there from Lake Forest Open Lands. We hope to have some lively community engagement about native plantings, both in the context of individual homeowners and what direction the city might take with its public properties and lands. So you're all invited to come. It should be a lot of fun and very enlightening.
Thank you. Any other comments by council members?
We still have, I think, two more items under Finance Committee agenda.
Okay.
Vendor list and the personal policies practices and official pay plan.
Moving then to the annual vendor approval. Elizabeth.
Thank you. In conjunction with the annual budget development process, included in your packet is a list, an abbreviated list of vendors for which the City Council's approval is sought. This was a result of a change in the city code related to purchasing policies that was approved in September of two thousand and eleven, which provided that payments for services provided on an unspecified ongoing basis for the city that exceeded twenty thousand dollars annually in aggregate would be considered and approved by the City Council as part of the budget development process. So that list is provided in your packet as well as, we've provided the fiscal year fourteen amount recommended, as well as the fiscal year twelve and fiscal year thirteen amount that was approved. We could see the trend of those specific vendors that is just submitted for your consideration this evening.
Are there any comments or questions regarding the annual vendor approval?
I'll, I'll move to approve the vendor list for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
This is a roll call vote as well.
Acting Chair Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alder, Alderman Pandoleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
And next up, we have approval of the FY twenty fourteen personal policies practices and official pay plan. Deshaie Comar is going to present that.
Thank you very much, Members of the City Council. The personal policies were included in your finance packet. All of the changes were noted in bold italics. They were very modest this year. The biggest one, I think the most substantive, was the employment of relatives policy. We inserted the new language that the PCA Committee approved back in November of twenty twelve, in which we were actually implemented back in November, but we did include the language in the new policies. Other than that, it was modest changes, added some language that our Irma, our liability carrier, had asked us to include about supervisory training programs and public information and the, regarding confidentiality, employees maintaining confidentiality of public information that they may run across as part of their jobs. And then we added the hands-free language to the cell phone policy section.
Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Acting Chair Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandoleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
And I might as well ask now whether there are any other comments by council members.
I have one comment, although I'm not a council member. Alderman Edelman's comments reminded me that I forgot to mention about the ward meetings. And I think Susan's going to put up on the screen there, we do have the ward meetings coming up. Ward three is going to be meeting on Wednesday, May fifteenth, at Alwa Farm, and we hope that temperatures will be accommodating for that evening. Ward one is meeting on Thursday, twenty-third, at Gordon Community Center. Ward two, Thursday, June sixth, at Cherokee School, and Ward four, on Monday, June tenth, at Dickinson Hall. And we hope that a lot of our residents will come out and ask questions and listen about what's going on in the city.
Thanks very much. Next on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Are there any citizens who would like to address the Council on non-agenda items? Yes, Mr. Pesquaz.
Bob Pesquaz, one seventy-two North Washington Road. I'm here trying to get something done that's going to be, have to be done sooner or later. They took the corners of Forest and Westminster and a couple of the other corners and put cars where there was a, where no car. So in other words, when you get to the corner to try to make a turn, you can't see anything. Now, I was uptown this morning and I almost got clobbered. Now, I, I don't know what's going to be done. I think that we should take that stripe out of there. You're only picking up a few cars. So I, does anybody drive uptown there, you know?
I've had similar dilemmas-
I actually totally agree with you. You cannot see around the cars at that intersection.
Yeah, but how, how come they do that?
Both directions.
Don't we get a chance to say whether it should be done or not?
I know those, I, those spaces have been in place for some time, Bob. We have looked at them in the past. We're, we're happy to do so. It's a balance of people, particularly the store owners, want to have ample parking adjacent to their properties. But I think on Westminster, the way it curves at both Forest and Westminster and also Bank Lane in Westminster.
Exactly.
Right outside the Starbucks are, those are probably the two that we do get most complaints about.
Bank Lane and at the bank also, same thing.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know.
Have to take another look at it if the council wants. I just, and we're happy to do that. You should just know that you'll get a little pushback from the businesses, but we're happy to look at them.
I don't think so. The, the businesses are getting problems from their customers. That's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, they, they're not happy with this situation. Their kids are crossing in front of cars that are, they can't see them coming.
Right. Well, certainly the cars have gotten-
The merchants don't want to see that.
And the cars have gotten a lot bigger too, which makes it even more difficult to see around them.
Cars bigger, cars don't mean anything. But that's the one thing. But then the other thing I'm thinking, I, I watched the program here and you're talking about, uh, money going out and paying for stuff that was coming up by the, the citizens of Lake Forest had to pay for. Is there any way that we can charge some of these developers for a fund for what they leave and we have to take care of after they're gone? And usually a subdivision, it doesn't hit overnight, but you've got your bike paths, you've got everything that has to come into consideration. I don't see why they shouldn't have to pay for some of that. They walk away with their pockets full and we end up paying for it. I don't see we shouldn't pay, but I think somebody else should pay too. Beth? Any questions?
Can I, well, I can, I think I can, Kathy, I may ask for some backup here, but there are things called impact fees that all the developers have to pay upfront, and that's exact, and then there are other things called off-site improvements that the developers have to pay for. And those are the conditions that are applied when the development is done. There is always debate at the Plan Commission level about ongoing maintenance exposures that the city has and whether we've gotten enough from the developers to cover those costs. So while it's not perfect and we don't, we don't catch everything and we don't foresee everything perfectly, by and large, if there's going to be an impact to traffic or other areas around and within the development that are going to end up as a city obligation, that those things are typically accounted for and paid for by the developer as part of the development process.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be feasible to put a four-way stop at Westminster and Forest?
Uh, actually, we could look into it. I think it would be a three-way stop, because you have a driveway on the north side of it, but we could certainly take a look at it and see.
But then you'd have another one half a block later.
Yeah, at Oakwood in Westminster right now, and so I think we'd have to just be careful that we don't-
Well, you have bank, you have forest, and you have Oakwood, but bank and forest are the ones that you can't see.
No one's rushing to get through our city center.
You'd think so.
It's not a superhighway.
That's right. We could certainly take a look at that whole stretch of Westminster from Oakwood all the way to Western Avenue.
I mean, you might be able to do it with just taking out one space on each block and splitting it and re-striping it and moving the spaces so that-
Right. Yeah, no, I think we could look at that.
All right. Any other citizens here to address the Council on non-agenda items? Right, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are the items for omnibus consideration. There are thirteen items tonight on the omnibus agenda. I will read through all thirteen and we can take them jointly or separate them out if necessary. Item number one is approval of the April fifteenth, twenty thirteen, regular City Council minutes. Item number two is the check register for the period of March twenty-third through April twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen. Item number three is the schedule of regular meetings of the City Council for fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Item number four is award of the contract for the Lake Forest portion of the twenty thirteen joint concrete pavement patching project. Item number five is award of a contract for Lake Forest portion of the twenty thirteen joint annual pavement patching contractual program. Item number six is award of the contract for the Lake Forest portion of the twenty thirteen joint sewer lining project. Number seven is award of the Illinois Road pedestrian bridge repair project. Number eight is approval of the contract for the annual mowing services in Park's FY fourteen budget. Item number nine is, nine is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board. This is up for first reading and if desired by City Council, final approval. Number ten is consideration of an ordinance approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, first reading and final approval. Eleven is consideration of a resolution in support of the Ragdell Ring Project as a one-year pilot project. Number twelve is consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter forty-six, Sections two and fifty-three point three, and the use matrix of the city code to permit a farmer's market in the B four, Preservation Business District, subject to performance standards as recommended by the Plan Commission, first reading and if desired by the City Council, final approval. And item number thirteen is consideration of a resolution authorizing component work related to the Route sixty median landscape project. Are there any comments or questions on any of the items on the omnibus agenda?
Acting Chair Waldeck, three very brief comments. One, the minutes should be subject to minor corrections of scriven errors. Two, item number ten, there are actually two ordinances, so it should be consideration of ordinances approving the recommendations of the zoning board. And three, as a point of information on the number thirteen regarding the, the Route sixty median, the resolution does provide that the CPO agreement be done in substantially the form already. So apropos the comment of, of Alderman Novit, that's already addressed.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on any of the items?
I would move that we approve the omnibus resolutions and grant final approval on those that are up for both preliminary and final approval.
I'll, I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Acting Chair Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandoleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is ordinances. Consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter forty-six, Section twenty-one A of the city code as it relates to terms for the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals as recommended by the Plan Commission. This is up for first reading and if desired, final approval. Kathy Serniak is going to speak on this.
Thank you, Acting Chair Waldeck, Members of the Council. This matter comes to you with the unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission and is really a procedural matter. This amendment would change the terms for zoning board of appeals members from one five-year term to align with the terms for various other boards and commissions to, three two-year terms. Now that the city is home rule, the council does have the ability to set the terms as you desire. This suggestion came to us from the caucus. They simply felt that asking someone to serve a two-year term to start with, with an option of continuing, might attract more people than asking them to serve a five-year term at the outset. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval.
Kathy, I just have a quick question. Is this the only board or commission that has a single five-year term?
It certainly is the only development-related commission. I don't know if there are other boards or commissions throughout the city that have a five-year term. I can't think of any.
I'm not sure that we have any currently. The reason why it was five years is because that's the statutory standard and it wasn't until we became home rule that we were able to vary from that. And this is the first time this is being brought to the council on that point.
And, and just to clarify, the current members of the zoning board who are appointed for five-year terms would serve out those terms. New appointees would be appointed for a two-year term.
Certainly seems to make a lot of sense. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to waive first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a voice vote, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there now a motion to, for final approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a roll call vote.
Acting Chair Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandoleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Next up, under new business, is award of bid for the City of Lake Forest janitorial services contract included in the FY two, twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen operating budgets. This is going to be presented by Dan Martin, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Waldeck and Members of City Council. Staff is bringing before you this evening a request to award a bid for a janitorial service contract. The proposed janitorial service contract consists of fifteen different locations throughout the city totaling just under a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of cleanable space. Over the years, the number of facilities that utilize janitorial services have, has increased from seven to fifteen facilities, resulting in multiple agreements being managed by different departments. To be more cost-effective, staff over the course of the past year developed a comprehensive janitorial bid specification that consolidated all the janitorial facilities under one bid proposal. To be certain, a good bid specification was developed, which would include the industry's best practice and latest green cleaning techniques needed to support the various departmental cleaning needs. Staff consulted with commercial property managers, local companies, and neighboring communities. The information was shared through the process, was very helpful with determining the best approach for staff to take with developing the bid specifications. For instance, the idea to require bidders to be green certified by a reputable third-party institute was gained from this process. As you can note in your packets, that's to be certified, to be trained and tested and audited is what that means by a third-party company that comes in and making sure that the best products are being used, that are the most green for the environment, as well as the practices that they take place with the cleaning, so. The building maintenance staff met with each department to review their janitorial needs. Staff then developed detailed janitorial specifications for each location. The specifications included a time schedule when the contractor can be in each night and with the required number of service days per week. Detailed specifications on what cleaning- Detailed specifications on what cleaning tasks are required for restrooms, common areas, administrative areas, on a daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly frequency. Floor plans and spreadsheet were also, were also given for each location, breaking down the square footage and number of fixtures. The floor plans estimated the number of square feet for cleaning carpet, wood, and vinyl, and tile surfaces. The spreadsheet indicated the number of fixtures to be cleaned, such as drinking fountains, toilets, and showers. The janitorial bidding process included a mandatory tour of all the facilities located locations to make certain each bidder's viewed the facilities and were aware of the travel distance needed between each location. Also, the bid proposal requested bidders to submit costs for three one-year terms. This was one area that staff did get, receive a lot of positive feedback from all of the bidders in the proposal, because on one hand, we did a lot of their work for them, but on the other side of it, we know exactly what they're bidding and it was very consistent and apples to apples, if you will, and it proved to be a very positive outcome for that, so. And at the March twenty-second bid opening, the twelve bidders listed in the council's packet were received. Crystal Maintenance Services Incorporated the lowest qualified bid for a hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents per year for a combined three-year total of five hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Based on the bid being a hundred thousand dollar cost reduction per year, staff conducted a thorough scope of services review with the low bidder and spoke to numerous references. Crystal Maintenance Services Incorporated met all of the required contract specifications and their references were, gave favorable responses. Crystal Maintenance Services Incorporated is a family-owned company that's been in business for more than twenty years. They have a hundred employees servicing approximately fifty-four accounts. Thirty-four of those accounts are municipal. They're either police station, they're multi-b buildings, similar to what we have as our facilities, which we felt was very positive as well. Some of those municipalities include the City of Highland Park, Village of Niles, Village of Northbrook, Village of Bartlett, and they also do the Lake County Forest Preserve facilities. If awarded the contract, Crystal Maintenance Service could begin as soon as June one, two of two thousand and thirteen, so. Staff recommends awarding the bid for janitorial service to Crystal Maintenance Services Incorporated for three one-year contracts for the combined amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen and fifty cents. And I could take any questions anyone has.
Dan, can I ask you to just point out two other items?
Sure.
While you're there. Number one, mention to the council who our current contract is with, so they can see the differential between the current bidder.
Oh, yes.
And then, secondly, it's my understanding that somebody on the city council assisted staff in working this, and I think we should point that out as well.
Yes. The, the response to the first question is signature cleaning. Actually, through this process, their, their price went up. In the, in the write-up, it is mentioned exactly what the cost was prior to that, which was two hundred and seventy-one thousand. As you can see, about midway down, signature cleaning was three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven, so they went up substantially from this bid process. The second question, or the second response to Bob's question was Alderman Pandoleon did a great favor to the city by giving a lot of his time and giving us the resources to talk with various building, commercial building, if you will, people that have a lot of experience with janitorial bids as part of their contracts that they do routinely all over the nation with all their thousands, hundreds of thousands of square foot of cleaning that they do and managing of facilities. So that was very helpful and much appreciated, so.
Thank you. I actually have one question. There's, it's, it's. It's three, it's three, it's three one-year contracts. I presume they're thirty-day cancelable?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So at any moment, if, because any time you go from a bid, you know, you're, you're operating at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year and all of a sudden, the new guy's at a hundred and seventy, and you're, got a new contractor, you want to make sure that you have a failsafe if things don't work out as nicely as you planned, so.
That's correct. I actually, it's a thirty day at the end of one year.
So they're locked?
Yes.
Are there performance standards that can, that can result in termination?
Now, what we did put in there is if they don't follow the specifications that we built, we can terminate it within seven days.
Okay, but it's not a no cause termination. It has to be for cause, so.
Correct.
There'll be a dispute and it'll drag on and, okay, got it. But yeah, having, but having the three-year, even a, even a soft commitment for three years is definitely going to result in more competitive bids because they can, they can be, you know, have, it saves them money to, to have the certainty, or at least some certainty.
Dan, how do we monitor the quality of the performance? Is there somebody dedicated in your department, or do you just wait for feedback, reactionary feedback from people in the various buildings? How do you monitor that?
We, we certainly like to be a little more proactive. We do, it's, it's managed under the building maintenance department, so the supervisor's in charge of that. And what we've done in the past is we've actually done spot checks at night, coming in and making sure that we pop in on them and making sure that they are performing and through walkthroughs. And of course, there are, because we have fifteen locations throughout town, we do have to rely as well on some staff to make sure that if they have misses, and then we, we go ahead and consolidate all those and then send those in immediately.
When would their first year commence?
June first. That's what we're hoping for.
And again, the company that we're discussing, Crystal, it's not a complete unknown. They are employed right now by City Highland Park.
That's correct.
Again, there's been references to check, seeing as believing to a certain degree.
Yes.
So again, it's not a great unknown that's coming into the community.
I've personally been to Highland Park and I've reviewed, I've been to Niles and a couple others, the other staff has been through, and we did quite a bit of talking. One of the nice things about municipalities, being thirty-four of the fifty-four customers, you've got a lot of people that you can talk to and they understand what you're dealing with, with all the different various types of cleaning, whether it's for a daycare center or lockup over at your public safety. They're just completely different animals. And you, finding that company and being able to develop those specs to be able to handle all those different types of variables. So you're able to speak very easily with them and they understand, so yes.
And if there was a problem, I mean, of course, Elizabeth would have told us any maintenance problems that occurred in Highland Park before she came to work for us.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank God she didn't hear me. But, no, no further questions.
So, I mean, the, the percentage savings here is pretty staggering, you know? I mean, it's, it's, it's amazing when, you know, when you really approach something in a methodical fashion, what you can accomplish. I mean, it's, I don't know, forty percent over, a forty percent savings versus the prior year and over fif, over fifty percent savings if you apply it to, just assuming we hadn't done anything.
Right.
Except apply the new standards and have the current, you know, the incumbent go on with their higher bid. So it's, it's good. It's a good job.
One might say we've cleaned up.
We've cleaned house, that's right. No, this is a, this is a great process and, you know, I just was asked to help out a little bit. And the, the staff came to me. They wanted to get into this. This was not initiated by me. So all I did was connect them into some people who are, you know, responsible for this kind of work nationally over millions of square feet of commercial property and who literally, I mean, they have a, they have a full-time person whose job it is to manage their cleaning contracts and, and that person has a couple of people as well, so. And they were able to tap that on a pro bono basis, so.
Yes.
And if you're out there, Jack Derberg from CBRE, he's probably in Asia somewhere right now, but thanks, Jack.
Yes, he was very helpful.
I'd like to move that we award the contract, or the three-year janitorial contract for the fiscal years two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and sixteen to Crystal Maintenance Services.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Acting Chair Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Pandoleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
And the next item is additional items for council discussion. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Wow. Have these been here for a while? Yeah. Stop. You can.
So it's really.
Oh, it's, uh.